Alright, we're jumping into Fund Two, which is water sewer in Neptune Island. I'm gonna do the same thing, gonna go over the revenues, capital again, and then we're from there. Alright, so as you can see, very simple. Well, this, this is gonna start on ninety-five, yeah. Yep. Just like a chess. So, again, we have been increasing this water sewer amount of funds. Gone from six point five nine nine in twenty eighteen to now we're at nine point seven nine. This is, that was actual, this is getting to the budgeted numbers. Again, so this year we've gone from a eight point nine five six million dollar budget to a nine point nine. One little difference, these do not have to be balanced, so that's why there are differences. So we do have, we are seeing a slight sixty thousand dollar buffer for the utilities, but that is with increased cost. This is where the revenues, this backup of the revenues was coming in. So charges for service water, we call that rents, that's what's in that budget. So thirty-four percent of it comes from water, thirty-five is sewer, we do have outside sewer, not outside water, except for miscellaneous. Twenty-five percent of it is through revenue from the water park, then penalties and fines, and then service charges. Yep. Yeah, we'll talk about that. Okay, um, yeah, that's a good point. So, one thing that is coming up that we're gonna be presenting in the master fee schedule? It would be in the May, the master fee schedule, tap fees for meters. Philip, do you wanna just talk about the dramatic increase you've seen in these costs?
Um, yeah, we can, uh, looking at our fee schedule, it has not been updated since, I think it was twenty nineteen was the last time the tap fees were actually updated. The current fees for taps don't even cover the cost for the actual meter itself. And so every time we put in a tap, no matter what size, three-quarter inch, all the way up to an eight inch, we are losing money based on putting in those taps. So, I mean, unfortunately, COVID increased the buyers and all that. But regardless of that fact, supplies pretty much go up on a constant annual basis, if not annual, probably by annual. I mean, not by annual, but every two, three years they'll go up, and that kind of leaves me with a view pretty awful. But trying to, that's without being said that we also have labor that is involved with it. Certain taps, we are unable to perform depending on how deep of the tap and the extent of it. If it calls for boring up underneath the roadway, that's a lot deeper than what we can actually handle. So we were updating those tap fees to account for the increased cost in the actual meters. And for, you can't base everything off of certain egregious situation for a tap, but at least try to get some of that labor back. So we're not just losing money every time we put it in tap, because that does cost a, cost us money, and it takes time to recoup that money. And if we quit in the tap and say something ends up off there and they don't come, if a resident doesn't come, or a commercial business doesn't come, then we lose on recouping that money in the long run.
On average, we're looking at increases about a hundred and seventy percent.
Yeah, so what's a, well, of course, what's a tap fee per cost?
So, uh, for instance, what's a, a three-quarter inch tap?
A three-quarter inch now is nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
If we need a charge.
The cost of just a meter in sale for a three-quarter inch is one thousand and forty-five dollars.
It's a problem, like, we're, we're bleeding out on that part, and we're overdue on this one. It's a problem, it's a problem.
Granted, it doesn't, we would rarely put one in, I think we only have one in stock, eight inch. We charge nine thousand and seven hundred dollars or somewhere around that about for the installation of an eight-inch water meter. An eight-inch water meter by itself costs seventeen thousand dollars today.
Do you say, like, we, we're way overdid on it? And this is just like any other city, you gotta cover your costs, okay, so we're gonna cover our costs.
The reason why, you know, we, we were suggesting, of course, now, if they're late than ever, but we are seeing with the increase, the new starts and housing starts are coming, we need to handle this. Uh, or else we're really starting to see a significant loss when we start adding up. So, it'll be coming to you guys, but part of that increase in the revenue is from that being planned into the budget. So I wanted you guys to head up about that, thanks for coming.
How do we, how do we educate Joe public?
Yeah.
So that they'll understand that, like, if I was gonna build a home?
So, oh.
Did we talk to the realtors, I mean, who?
Well, the good news is that, I mean, it's, the good news, bad news, the Joe vote public is really not, it's the builders who are doing it. So this is a pass-through, so if it costs an extra ten grand to build a thing, that's factored into the cost of the house, it should be.
That's exactly right.
It's kind of the same thing if we were looking at impact fees, that is really just passed on to the house ownership, it's not to it, coming out someone's right pocket, it's over the years.
And the good part for us is that if they want to, if they're upset about, right, I mean, we're showing the invoice for a meter, I mean, we gotta cover our costs of the meter, uh, that's why I'm not as.
This is for physical, not for tangible, so, uh, when we do put this through master fee schedule, yeah, we will be working with our different groups that we typically work with. So, what we see today will be this tomorrow.
And you're saying if we see a huge development coming in, this is where they need to talk with us about economic incentive, then we bring it to y'all, where they get reimbursed on these things, right? So, if we're getting to that point, this shouldn't be a holdup for a huge development, because we need to present it to y'all as an economic incentive.
If they request it.
Orance, right?
And the strategic investment.
Right, so we did something like that when we did, um, Mr. V's, right? Because we did the math on it, and we presented to y'all to provide it as an economic incentive. So this would, this certainly, you know, take away from any of that, of a huge development coming, because we're gonna be talking with y'all about it and doing tap reimbursements.
And they in turn gonna pass it on to the buyer anyway.
This is exactly right.
It's, it's kind of, I hate to say it, it's not like a, it's a pass-through.
Yeah.
This is an increase in cost that we're seeing across the board.
Like the hospital number going up.
Lowe's is gonna chart, Lowe's is gonna chart.
You gotta do it.
So this will be there.
Absolutely.
But cities, we, I don't.
Philip, you're gonna say it, ten thousand versus seventeen thousand, that's not on.
Right, and you know how many deals we would have to have for those type of things to re, to recoup that, so, listen, I'm right, and thank you, Dan, for looking into that. He's been on a lot of work around that to get these fees correct.
Good.
Good. Sets revenue. Believe I have them for a while.
Briefly, um, kinda, last year the water park, without the hospitality money going over, did we make any money at all, break even at all?
So the water park is designed, is to break even, that's where that hospitality comes in. It is not designed to, if we wanted to make money, we have to essentially charge triple for the admissions. Hospitality, so that when it was first incorporated, and I didn't even speak to this one, I'm gonna try. It was designed, it had the water sewer rates, it covered it as the backfall. But essentially, the goal was to have hospitality to cover the shortfall after the admissions. We've reached that point, so this is operating as intended. If you want to start getting into charging different things, then you'd have to look at the increase in rates for admission.
Right, I would never say that this is, is making money for it, but the reason why we combined it with the water sewer so that we would never increase other rates over here. And we haven't increased water sewer rates to do that, right? It's operating as it should and as I planned, um, and when we look back, and no one wants to go back and look at that huge analysis we did that took about a year on, to get it done, on that. Um, even when we built out the financials on it, it was never, it was never intended to go into the green on that. So, I will say, the struggle we've seen the most there, um, is our ten personnel cost. I mean, labor is ashtrun, but I'm gonna pay it to get the lifeguards that I need.
Well, if we close, we make no money.
None.
Right, well.
So, um, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna dive in directly into Neptune Island in just a minute, and you'll see exactly what we're coming into. But it's, the answer is it's operating as intended. It has missions, the money it generates, plus hospitality covers the debt payments, and that was exactly how it was intended. That was the ultimate goal of the, of the park when it was first designed. So operating as intended.
Cause we tweaked a few things year after year after year.
We do make changes.
Certain things like weather and, and equipment failure, whatever, we can't control.
The big thing is whether it can't control, yeah, the biggest thing that affected us with the water park is weather, and then the schedule, of the school schedule.
And I was gonna say, COVID was a, for us, for us to survive COVID was.
I blocked that out.
We tried, we tried to forget about that here, um, that we did it.
Yep.
So, has there been any consideration to, I'm gonna call it off-season, for use of the water park and making money, like for adult entertainment?
Very difficult, um, because, uh, I would need to drain the river again, because if it's even open at all to the public, I have to have a certain amount of lifeguards.
Twenty-five lifeguards, how many?
Even though I don't wanna have a bar here.
Yeah, now, one thing I am working on is putting up the gate between, um, the splash pad and the water park, and opening the splash pad outside of water park season.
So that's what we talked about with the splash pad, that's currently under construction. The splash pad opens up some options for us to have, um, more time, because I don't need lifeguards for that. But now, I mean, it's, we are, we live and die by the teenagers that come to work that place. If they're not, if they're in school, the place has to close, that's just the way it is. We don't have enough adults who will work the plant, work it. You know, our, our average age out there is what, seventeen, I think? Uh, so we hire a two-hundred youths every single summer, and then when they leave, the park has to close, um, that's just the way it is. Um, that's how it's designed, so we, we have seventy-six operating days, we had ninety to begin with. School district changed to a new schedule, we have like seventy-somethings operating days, and that's without rain, that's not counting rain. So the water park is, uh, that's an operating as intended.
And I, there's some other things that we're thinking about, we're gonna have discussions on with someone coming up that maybe could lead to some out-of-season things out there, which will be really cool. So I'm trying.
That is, this is, actually, I may have a bit of a problem with the venue, the brain goes up, but this killer, this urban, uh, I'll call it urban stories. A lot of people believe that the water park is costing them money on their water rates.
Absolutely.
How can we educate the public, this is not affect your sewer and water bill monthly?
Yeah, I'd have to think about what I could do from a knowledge standpoint to get that across, that it's not.
A lot of people don't believe that, you didn't take the leaks in your house, or your water. I knew that.
I know, I just wonder how I would, where, like, what can I put in, I wonder how I put it on the reveal, maybe I just put it across the top.
Yeah, especially if they live nearby, it's that water water constantly money.
Absolutely.
Well, so, I mean, I think the, the fear comes in, because if the water park were to shutter, if something were to happen, the backstop to that, and this is what was proposed, is that the water sewer rates will have to go up to cover the debt service payment that is in the bond. So, but that is not happening right now, so what is happening is admissions are paid for, running the, we're running it as a business, and hospitality, so cheeseburgers and admissions are paying for the water park right now, not your water and sewer rate.
Look at how much the cabanas bring in.
Cabana rentals, businesses, so, so we'll, if you give a minute, we'll dive into that in a second. Um, this is, uh, this is the entire fund, this is expenditures, operating expenses for water and sewer are the biggest thing, transfer to general fund is the next one, and that is by calculation. And we look at every single year, uh, there's math behind that, and there is, uh, because we don't just transfer stuff without any thought. As the general fund increases, this is the portion, uh, that we transfer for utilities, that is our payments essentially for Karen, myself managing those things. So it's a lot of different things, not just Karen I'm managing, not twenty-five percent, but everyone, HR, IT, um, service payments, that's all that transfer over, there's a calculation behind that. Capital expenditures, again, we have ten point two percent, and salaries and benefits are fourteen, and debt services ten.
But one thing too, that maybe sex also, right, I heard about that note, to make sure we have that calculation. But, um, also in that, you would have like IT costs.
Yeah.
Banking fees, all of these things are in the general fund, and we have to transfer back for that.
So that's how it's.
It is a lot of things that are going into it, um, that go into that calculation.
Some cities, you need to follow strict calculation and maintain that, because that's the.
And we have a free and trusty portion in that as well.
Alright, so this is page ninety-nine, right, I think? Yep, so we're driving, this is gonna be five hundred and six hundred, um, funds water and sewer. So again, our salaries and benefits, operating expenditures, they are split between the two, so they kind of go back and forth. But, uh, any questions about the water and sewer expenditures? Page ninety-nine going forward.
So that argument, the, the resident type of that.
It's not based, it's not based in.
The rest town has this, um, increase on our taxes, about two thousand fourteen.
We, we have not, so the city is not, uh, not, I think a debt service payment, we have not raised taxes. You know, it's, it's an option that people do, I mean, that's also really cool.
Yeah, that's what I'm just bringing up, we, we haven't had one since.
Yeah, the G O debt, the last G O debt that we took out was actually when I started in, uh, it was to replace the bricks downtown with the hall ball. That's the last portion of.
I think so, maybe not.
What, who you talking about over there?
Yeah, me, yeah. So, yeah, we don't take out debt service payments. Any questions about five hundred and six hundred? Utilities are expensive, but they do operate pretty well. Okay? Say very well, okay, so here's Neptune Island. Thank you. So. Neptune Island, a big increase, of course, salary benefits is that type of cost, we've had increased costs every year to attract workers. Um, we have, we have a great competition with other businesses that are paying for that nature, so we have to ensure that we're doing it, and to ensure we have lifeguards to kind of work for us.
And one thing I want to say we did this year, Tracy brought up a great point, we should have a ton of work into this calculation, y'all should see the behind scenes of what Terry and Tracy do to get this where we're at now. Um, one thing we're trying to do, and it's one thing I push for every year, keep our numbers as real as possible. And this is the first, we're really trying to meet our goal with ten personnel, we tend to go over every year in the cost, so you are seeing a big jump this year, because we're gonna, we're trying to true up if our budget is the best we can. So, I just wanna point that out, that's why we see increases as well.
And you do see that, that large capital expense we did, that is the splash pad and some, and some, uh, slide restoration, but, uh, we're, we're all a little bit.
Yep.
Alright, um, I think we.
So you know the lifeguard is a problem, um.
That's a national problem.
Right, yeah.
We have, we seem to have.
But, um, how do we deal on the one that served the cabanas?
So we, we do fairly well, I mean, so, uh, historically, we've done very well with food and beverage, and, uh, they wasn't.
Everybody's seen an increase then, it wasn't just lifeguards.
Jail services?
So everyone got paid.
Yes, services.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying, um, you got the twenty-one working cabanas, right?
Eighteen to bring out, well, twenty-one working bar. So basically, uh, every year, we, you know, we, this is year six, seven?
Seven.
Seven, seven years of this place, and going over seven seasons. And each year, we are getting better and better at how we manage essentially amusement attraction, uh, for what's going on as a city. And, uh, we think we have kind of really, uh, done a good job with figuring out how to get the lifeguards to come back. A lot of it's with who we employ and who we have, um, you know, creating engaging staff that we have out there. Um, cause it really is trying to capture a group of people that is very hard for it to capture. And so pay is one aspect of it, but we do quite a bit, but this year, we had four into a hundred applications, have a link, right? Was it four to a hundred?
No.
It was something like that. Five, five hundred, that's what I meant, not four hundred, five hundred.
I was like, who?
I was gonna say four hundred and twenty, five hundred applications, that's even better. And so we had quite a bit of ability to pick who we wanted from this group. And we hired, we're trying to get about a hundred lifeguards, and then the rest of it was food, drinks, beverages, and guest services. So it's, it's attracting that group, but lifeguards, we've done well, we had a shortage the other year, but that was a natural shortage.
So, while, while we're on water park, um, I wanna know about the Y and swim program.
So I've, I've spoken with the Y about it, that's a burden we have to flush out with them, uh, work on doing that. Uh, they are going through the renovations right now, so I think it'll be something we can revisit when they do that.
What was it I know that saw on City Swim?
City Swim.
Because now we have a tantric here, maybe that's what I could get and help you with.
Yeah, uh, that's been a conversation we've had with them, I know they're doing it, right now, our goal is we're getting prices on redoing the Y to see a parking lot.
Right.
Uh, so we need to get that, uh, patch taken care of, uh, as soon as possible. And, um, with that, they're gonna have their construction going on inside, they literally received one point nine million from the state. A lot of interior modifications going on, including, I think, there's some work done to the pool that we'll leave, but that's when we can have those conversations pretty fast. Cause we can't do City Swim at Neptune Island, it's just not.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's why, why we were talking about Neptune Island, I wanted to tell, ask about the, um, City Swim program.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna volunteer Kendrick to help do that, he used to do, he ran an aquatic center in, in Colorado, so, I bet he'd be interested if we bring it back, because I would think it's awesome.
Daniel, the food at Neptune, another one, getting a little off topic.
You're finding your own topic, we're good.
You know, we've continued to work with it, work with it, I noticed last year, Chick-fil-A went, what was it, a day a week or something like that?
Yep.
Have we just kind of crunched the numbers to see about maybe outsourcing the food, and letting them give us a percent, or as far as what we save on personnel, or?
Uh, I don't know, who we, uh, we can certainly look into outsourcing that aspect.
Or if they were doing the food.
Beverages, exactly. Now, the food and beverage is one of those areas that, uh, with what we're trying to do out there, and the improvements we made, adding that kitchen that you guys invested was a game changer for us. So each year, I think we'd, it'd be beneficial for us to keep it as we're doing it, that's something that we, uh, especially.
Especially the drink, that's where you make, I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Well, especially with our, um, our new general manager who's used to running these type of things, uh, we really, I think, have a good handle on the food and beverage side to it. And then, again, we did increase some of the cost for items, but that's a, a pass-through with them for increased items and costs. The only thing that we do contract out is Kona Ice, and.
And we, it's a profit share.
It's a profit share, they have that down pat, and if I cannot deal with sticky mess, I will not deal with sticky mess.
I'll never forget season one, I thought the yellow jackets were maybe a lot when we tried to do our own, um, I would never try to do a still column stand again on my own, it was terrible.
The fact that we're on City Park property, with City Park, it's, we wanna be careful that we allow to do that stuff, especially with liability.
Yeah.
So are we able to supply enough food for our kids?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
They turned low tapoosies into our, our original food trailer, they turned that into fully doing pizza, because as you tell, because I would have filtered out that. But each summer, we were trying to figure out how to make it more efficient and effective on that, but it's, it's getting me easier to fill up with each year.
Cause we, we had a, a little problem with that one time, David.
Oh, yeah, we would sell up very quickly.
Right.
And I didn't know exactly what I was doing, I'm trying in the kitchen, so.
We've, we've, uh, we've essentially created a new department, and it's an amazing asset to have, uh, that no other place has. And people call us to say, how did you do it? And frankly, I mean, it's an envy, but I mean, they don't understand the work that they're doing to make that work.
It's very difficult.
So, but, um, no, I mean, we, we do, we do a good job with food.
I will say too, that in just addition to just general food cost increase, and they've really worked on improving the quality of the food over the past couple of years. I still don't know if y'all eating out there, but a lot of people compliment the food quality compared to two or three seasons ago, so that's another reason prices have increased and food costs have gone up too.
And Chastity, and so if you don't recall, Chastity started the water park, and Karen built the water park, so, uh, they, these two are the ones who know what's going on.
That's how I was like, I gotta hire Tracy, she can handle this water park, we need her.
So she's been with us since season one.
It's the same way at the ball field, I mean, they've talked about food being good at the ball field, and it's cheaper than what they can go through and get a kid's bill for.
So true.
And, um, it's one-stop shopping, so to speak.
Yep.
So it's the same food vendor?
We use a lot of the same food vendors as Parks and Rec is. And that, and the good part around that is like Pepsi and such doing both contracts, they give us a slight, slight discount.
And like, for instance, the Parks and Rec, we're looking at what came, bars, and that, and the concessions, but also, you know, probably, but we're certain full teams at Neptune Island.
They do out there, don't we, at that park, yeah, they eat dinner out there, I'll eat dinner out there, I get, my child eat concessions every night, I don't wanna cook, so, I got it.
Yep, that's supposed to be there. So, I don't know what it is.
Just get back on track.
Alright, so, um.
You're getting, you're like, you have some.
Debt service, uh, that is the largest portion again, and then temporary personnel. Um, and we do meet that debt service every single year by the cost that we raise through the park, and also how the hospitality, again, is covered a hundred percent, but it's. Alright, and that's just how it's broken down, um, pool chemicals is supplied, is unstuck, marketing, and that's other operating. We have four full-time staff, four, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, I went too far, any question about Neptune Island before we end it? Again, entering seven, season seven, the splash pad is under construction, had some delays with D hack approving some of the stuff, so we're looking at a, hopefully a June operation. Early June operation, um, and then when we do that, we'll be looking at options to keep it open longer and before, when it's warm enough for a splash pad. I feel really excited about that. Any other questions? Okay, let's jump into sanitation. Thank you so much. So sanitation, I believe this has my favorite slide in it.
What?
What's coming, what? What did I say? Did I skip stormwater? I don't think I have stormwater in.
You gotta be, uh.
It might come later in other funds, I, I, I grouped the last day with the last slide.
Uh, you did, okay.
Yeah, so we're.
Wait, we gotta get the right page.
We're going to sanitation then.
Okay, so one thirty-three.
One thirty-three, guys, we're gonna, we'll jump back to stormwater. Keep you guys entertained. Alright, so, um, sanitation provides residential and commercial. Residential is, uh, by organs, everyone in the state limits uses a residential, commercial is not by organs, so it is a business competing with other commercial pickups. So we try to remain competitive, um, we do offer, I think, a very excellent service, so anyone who's looking for trash services will be given a call. But you can see that the increase is here, that is with capital, uh, we had to do an emergency purchase of a truck, if you guys recall, for a front loader, because we had, uh, one go down, and we almost didn't have ability to operate. And then last year, we did buy a truck, this year, we're not buying trucks, that's why it's lower, uh, cost, so we're looking at one point five million dollar, um, ex-revenues, and then expenditures of one point four for twenty twenty-two. And then going into next year, it's one points, for this year, it's one point seven and one point six eight, is for the revenues and, uh, expenditures. Still going up, but no expenditure, capital expenditure this year. Any questions about the revenues?
So you said if anybody was interested, give me a call.
What's that?
You said if anybody was interested, give me a call.
Call me about commercial services, I'll be happy to serve you.
What on fund does your recycling fall under?
That's in this one.
This is in.
I'll tell you, yeah. This is gonna be your, your reg, residential, commercial, yard waste, and recycling.
Briefly on recycling, um, after we, we're over the contract now that we initially had with, with Sunoco, right? Cause you know, they bought the truck and.
Recycling contract, we sell to Sunoco, but we have an active contract with Sunoco with recycling.
Initially.
We might add initial, yeah, yeah.
Um. We pay somebody to come get our recycling, and they turn around and get something foreign. I know there's some outsourcing with some recycling companies that'll just come pick it up. Do they still charge to come pick it up as well, or do they make money on the back end, and, and they're okay with that?
We take our recycling to Sunoco recycling facility down here on Finch Street, and then they sell it, um.
But we had to pay them to take it, right?
Pretty much.
We did, we do have to take it.
So that's what I'm saying, we kind of a double loser.
Yeah.
I was just asking if there was another.
We'll get different options.
So we, we have looked at other options in the past, I think the issue we ran into was.
They all wanna take over everything.
Yeah, Sunoco, we, we've looked at doing it before, especially we looked at the yard waste, uh, getting rid of our recycling, or like, that's something to get over.
It may not be enough money to even borrow them.
If somebody probably to outsource it to the recycling park, they would wanna take over the sanitation part of it as well, and they would increase the cost, uh, they would drastically increase the actual cost of doing the sanitation part, and they would include yard debris in that period. Most people are not gonna wanna take over recycling at all, they'll just want your trash service.
Okay.
Cause in one of the mag, magazines, months and months ago, I believe it was coming out of Barnes, there was a recycling, and.
Oh, yeah.
And I read an article, and I thought we'd just come and get it.
People do offer that, and we looked into it, we were looking at, uh, how to acquire enough roll cards for the, uh, the yard waste. It was gonna charge residents if they wanted it, eighteen to twenty-three dollars a month, so, that's for recycling.
We are trying to figure out something with cardboard, you know, you can sell cardboard to Sunoco, and you will get a percentage fixed off of how much cardboard is going for at the moment. Doing that with certain people, we, but, but we got a couple of commercial businesses that we get their cardboard for, and sell it to them.
The issue we ran into is recycling, this is not, the money out of it, it's not as much cardboard.
Fourteen billion dollar budget, if it's only pennies on the dollar, it's just not worth messing with.
And if somebody contaminates a roll card with anything that's not recyclable, then Sunoco will reject that whole article.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually, it's another, you know, it's, it's selective stuff.
Yes.
I've had one, once I accident threw in a plastic bag, and I just saw this, guy jumped through your hut, he took my container, something plastic bag, he pulled it out, threw it back.
Yep.
I was like, whoa, man, that's not really real idea, it's still like that, no star from, no flash, no.
So, I mean, this is something.
We pay them to take that.
Yep.
They'll charge your extra if you don't contaminate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still.
So briefly on a, a few items in this, in this item, um, so, in order for this to.
Take your way and leave.
In order to balance this budget too, for sanitation directly, uh, so if you guys recall, the last, not this past year, but the last three years, we had to increase our rates to, to cover our costs, it was a dollar every single year. This year, to cover our costs again, we had to include a two-dollar increase for sanitation. This year, to cover our costs again, we had to include a two dollar increase for sanitation services. So and then we are looking at doing a similar program with a two dollar increase this year. Proposing a dollar increase next year, a dollar increase next year. We just can't keep up with costs that's going up.
If I don't do it, we're in the negative. And then when you're at that point, you're using general fund money. Our costs are sealed so low. I mean, it's what we're asking people to pay. Right now, we're at twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents, then it go up to twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents.
I was standing far from your door.
I'm at election time.
Well, we'll fall back on no tax increase.
Agreed.
That's right.
You know, this is, this is for, this is for direct service we apply. It is, it is, the fee is a tax technically, but I understand it's, this is accommodation, and I know it's it's tough.
I'd rather have this than the building cost.
Just like with the the meters, our costs are, it's just that we're doing this for, what we offer for twenty-six dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Is, I mean, do you hear, when I just said recycling, only recycling by private company was the same cost as what we're offering for all four. So in regards to yard waste, we did have our staff do analysis. The first time we did see a reduction, this time we have a slight reduction. We were able to take sixty-five less tons, so one hundred and twenty-seven thousand pounds of less yard waste to dump after this one year. But what's really shocking is that we still came just under what it was last year, because they put it that much more though. So if we were looking at not making a change, we would have been in the negative essentially, with everything we do. We kept going the way we're going with the leaves.
We would have been, right. With this, you would be.
Yeah, the leaf change was appropriate. We do have, I would say, fairly decent compliance. There's still a couple of holdouts that we're working through right now. But for the most part, we have very good compliance. So the leaf back, leaf changes is ensuring our program can keep going and not have to do an increase. There's no yard waste increase for the cost for anything this year.
Well, we're just picking up yard waste. I'm talking about loose every other week. Is that safe just with?
So we, so we pick up loose every week, bulk is every other week, off of recycling week, and that has been working now. I would like the residents to, and that was again part of the program that we notified and wrote about. But something that is happening is that people are putting it out right afterwards. It's sitting for a little bit, and people are noticing that it's out. We're getting it. It's just gonna be the week after recycling. So if people could help us by not putting out for two weeks, that would help, but we're still getting it.
Okay.
You know what happens? It's on another side of the paper. I had to turn it over up in there.
So the fact we don't think bulk and loose.
So loose is bagged now.
Loose is bagged.
So call, call bagged, call it bagged.
That's a good way to say it.
So bagged is every week.
Yeah.
And if you have small limbs, put them in a bag, we'll take it, not a problem, or put it in your roll card.
Yeah.
Because I I have my roll cards, throw little limbs in there. If you have larger limbs that are more than three inch in diameter and six feet in length, or smaller than that, if you want to put those out, that's the limit you can put out to them. That's. If you have a large thing, that goes out every other week.
I made a big joke when you say bagged versus.
Bagged, yeah. Well, it's, loose is the correct term, but we're not, we're not bagged. We're bag city. So.
And I think too, something that'll be helpful, I just told Jessie, let's try and provide that for y'all, and maybe this could help with your constituents if we talk about a comparison with, if you have to pay for private residential trash pickup. Like, I have to pay for it, y'all, and it's terrible. I don't get yard pickup. I don't get anything. I pay forty-five a month. I mean, it's awful. So I just, I think it'd be helpful for y'all to have that information when we talk about what we're paying.
That's what I was gonna ask, because when Dan said if anybody, you know, wants to see the sanitation, if they want their services, then you got, you got to know how much Holland.
I completely agree. Yeah.
Let's just, we're commercial too. So commercial, and that's competitive. I mean, we we can beat with the public, we can beat with several large groups, you know, do the dumpster. But we have by organs, we do all residential trash, and that's common in cities, so.
But I think it's important to know what is like a general residential pay.
Sure.
Right.
From a private company.
Oh, sure.
Right. They're getting it at a seal, and they also get res, we still do recycling, right? Recycling and yard debris.
Yep.
So in private, don't offer that.
No.
So.
No, they they just get the.
It's terrible, y'all. They skip me. They're not coming for two. They're not coming back.
Okay, yeah. All right, so this this is my favorite slide. That's where the revenue comes from. Residential, commercial, that's it. It's a very complicated chart. Takes some time to study it.
Right.
Forty-seven percent, fifty-seven percent. That is it. All right. So going in, and this is on page one thirty-two, Star City. So this is the, again, the, that's revenues, I believe. Is that not revenues? Yeah. And then, I think a chart for expenditures is on page one thirty-two.
And y'all, they absolutely could could use another truck this year. They did have that in there, but because their budget is so tight, I said, y'all, we need to hold off a year. They can always use one. The wear and tear on those is very difficult, but we think they couldn't afford it this year. So they need to have some debt payment start to roll off until, I I really need to just give a year there. But I do want to say that they they could use another one, but I, we deleted that one out for them. Sorry. That's how tight the budget is.
Turn to page one thirty-five. Don't, this chart is not the right one. That's just, that's the actual revenues. I meant to do a expenses, so it's on page one thirty-five here. To look at the expenditures for sanitation.
Okay. We kept theirs as as tight as we could. It was a difficult budget.
You said they could use another truck?
Yeah, they wanted, oh, no, they wanted.
Use another, uh.
Absolutely. But we don't.
You want a front one?
Yeah, caught on fire.
Oh, that's right. It did catch on fire. That exists.
We're down to two now.
They're down to two. They're down to two. They have one fire.
So they had to, they went to, you did a rebuild on one. That was the giant orange one. The orange one caught on fire, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And so we were had to, we did an emergency purchase, because that's two, we really only equal to about one.
One.
Maybe even half of one.
Because the, 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 always, commercial is what is the state sanitation department, so if you have no truck to operate commercially, then it'll drastically hurt.
Yeah, so that's the problem.
That's the problem. The dumpsters.
That's the ones that are out to a hundred and forty.
So you charged them to help you on the fire?
We have some, we do have some money for that, but a truck is about two hundred.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Now it's at the four hundred thousand dollars per truck.
We didn't get that much for the, for the whole truck.
The one, the truck you guys bought in twenty twenty-two?
Is that, we bought the truck in twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one was like two hundred and seventy thousand?
Cool, boy, you pay ACV at the time of the current?
No, I don't believe so. ACV.
Actual cash value of the truck at the time.
Well, that that truck is.
What, what did y'all get for that truck?
Hundred thirteen.
Yeah.
That's the value of that truck.
So you did recoup some.
We did recoup, yeah, thirty thousand, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, but it wasn't an else deal for me to tackle.
I understand that, but I mean, at least it didn't put it in the scrap heap.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, no, they have that sitting, and they have that sitting in account. If they can, we can figure something out right away. But I said, even with one thirteen, I can't put that much debt on this year.
Thank you.
I believe a truck will sound tight, maybe, y'all.
All right, now moving on to hospitality and accommodations.
One forty-one.
One forty-one?
One forty-one, sorry.
So hospitality is chief orders, accommodations heads and backs. So we have seen, this is a growth pattern. This is from the actuals from twenty up to twenty twenty-three. So you see we are extending growth up. Accommodations has been kind of a, more of a, not a, not a lot of growth.
Y'all can see the year COVID happened, right? Y'all can see the.
Yeah, COVID.
We can see it.
Um, but then the year before, I'm not sure what was that.
But that's when it hit them.
Nineteen, twenty, yeah, that would help, yeah. Two hundred sixteen, this year, oh, maybe that one, down chart. So this year, if you look at it, we're budgeting one point two nine, so that's on page one forty-one. And accommodations, we are budgeting.
Accommodations is a big page in that.
Okay, well, we'll talk about hospitality first. So hospitality is again, our prepared food tax, that is by all restaurants and businesses that do that. It is just another tax added on. It is a cost not to the business, but to the purchaser, and it is directly given to us. It's not the business's money. It is essentially our money. It's just like a federal tax.
Well, Dr. Matt's out on the hospitality revenue, because it looks like only five thousand dollars.
Which was a huge bump last year.
Yeah.
This is where we talk about growth plateauing.
Honey, you can go out at three, four o'clock in the afternoon, and most of the drive-throughs are wrapped around the building everywhere you go.
I know, and it's it's steady, and I'm thankful for that.
Oh, I am too. That's where you know I was asking, oh, about the max out.
We're maxed out.
Where, until we get some new restaurants. And that's, and that's where, you know, we talk about like this master plan that we're doing. This is, that is the next phase of this, of the growth we're going to see. If, as we plan for that and start pushing things like our fourth and railroad project, which is a, you know, downtown project expansion, Fourth Street being looked at, looking at getting more people we know, and then also our Sixth Street project we have going on, and then out by the hospital. As we start planning for that growth, and we start adding more people, and then also what comes with it, restaurants, that's gonna be that next growth that we're gonna see, because right now, this is our revenues for what we have. Go ahead.
Okay, let me ask you one thing. Okay, so it's a two percent tax, sale tax.
On prepared foods.
Prepared food, right? So the city does not get that total amount for sale. We get a percentage of that, all right?
We get the two, we get the two percent.
We get a two percent? We don't share with accounting anybody?
We get the full two percent.
Yeah, I thought I'd be.
That's all.
All right, cool.
And people don't understand, they'll, well, we, we, I pay taxes, but if you're on a piece of property or be a, you actually don't pay taxes.
But you know, in all I tell some folks, they did get on me. I pay taxes, and I know you pay sale tax. I pay taxes. I shouldn't say it that way, but it's a secret real, you know.
And y'all, when we came up with that, we had a huge number for this year, the way it tracked last year. We come up with a year to date, and we parroted it out and look at previous years for the analysis. And we based it on last year. We got the one one two, one eight. I think we'll get to the one two eight five, but I don't see how much higher we will go on that. That's a big number that we pushed for, because last year was booming.
Yeah.
Um, I think people are being more strategic where they're spending right now.
We're seeing, yeah, we're seeing, we're seeing people not spending as much going on, and it's, I mean, you had that kind of post code move, you know, people wanting to spend and getting out. And now, as we start, we're seeing what our true revenues are for this area as it is currently.
Yeah.
But as we start adding in more places and more businesses, how then, that number will go up.
I see that's a, I'm kind of replying. I don't just make that lot of space in place, people have to eat, and everybody could get home.
No.
Because it's unbelievable.
Well, five dollar combos are five dollars.
They're not.
No.
Right.
We've had to limit, I'm just, we all have had to limit at this stage, so.
So hospitality, and we do have money to spend out across the areas, so.
But it's the less we eat, we go into groceries.
And I think y'all, one thing to note this year is that we don't have the adventure payments, so that really could help us out.
It was a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so we're able to assist with the Christmas events that we've been picking up that are huge for the city, and then kind of spread that across back over for a general fund bank and things like that. But that's a difference this year to the city.
Yeah, I was saying how Harford can support more eateries, man, because they're the population, I think. So that's a form where.
I want them to try.
They love you, man.
Variety.
I mean, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot more houses in the city, also outside the city. Those people come to Harford, so that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I agree on that. The folk rhythm, like variety, but the rest is even a little.
We would have talked the taste of paper and he ran.
All right. Um, if you want to move on, accommodations on page one forty-four, we can see that growth, what's going on. We're anticipating, we got two sixteen this year. We did see a yard looking at a decrease.
Yep.
Um, so we budgeted one ninety this year.
So one forty-four.
One forty, page one forty-four.
Starts on one forty-three.
This is what, yeah.
I think Dan, I hope, we're a little bit of an older company.
Mine is older too.
Yeah, it's one, it's one forty-three.
One forty-three, okay, gotcha. One forty-three. So you look at our accommodation revenue is one ninety, and then we do, that money is allocated, we have it to our tourism. And then we also, that money goes out to people for applications for getting it right now.
But that's the state.
The state accommodations, sorry, the state accommodations. So this is just for, go ahead.
Now, I was asking you to repeat what you said.
Oh, I was speaking of the state accommodations. I just want to apologize. So we are seeing that the decrease, we're seeing less people do it. I hope that we have a resurgence.
I need an outage probably happen at Duke. I don't know when they got one coming, but if they could have one, if y'all are watching, please, Duke, I need y'all to have an outage. It always really helps. It's a big move for us.
Or another dog show or something.
We need something. So hopefully that will pick up. We'll keep working on tournaments, trying to get them to come here. I think we have some, can you have some good ideas for some different things for?
I don't know if this website's reliable, but it lists a member that this year has an outage for others.
It'd be great.
Also, a big thing is when Senator Beer comes back, it's very.
Senator Beer comes back, and then Little Miss Harford comes back to, then that's gonna.
That is true. I forgot about that. Little Miss, you know, when they open back up, that y'all were booked.
Yes.
That's a two or three week.
It's what they are here. Yeah, and I know the business will be thankful now.
Yeah, twelve straight days or something like that.
It's amazing.
So as, as, we see it, we see a light in the, at the end of the tunnel.
Absolutely.
But accommodations has never really been, it's kind of ebbed and flows. Everywhere is down. The county was down this year, so just.
Coach really did hit accommodation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I don't think it really has really quite recovered the way accommodations has been the one that never really did, because people, although they bought, you know, prepared foods and fast food, they did not stay anywhere.
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking at. All right. Well, then, this last, this is the last slide, so I'm gonna be covering all the other funds. So if you want to cover the stormwater fund, you know, anybody? Oh, you can cover two.
Storm.
Is that, is that my specialty?
That's yours now.
One nineteen.
Or go back.
Somewhere it's at.
Exactly. I skipped the rest too many times.
One nineteen.
Page one nineteen.
If y'all hang with us, I think we'll be able to get through the remainder of the budget.
Yeah, so stormwater is on page one nineteen, with the transfer money essentially, and we have that payment as well.
That's right.
We do have one staff in this, but we ended up taking that stuff out. It's still in that stormwater fund, okay?
Yep.
So.
And that's all we have there. That's the transfer. Utilities coverage don't work completely, but I want to make sure you're aware of what eighteen is.
It still exists because we had a stormwater fee at one point two, but then we got a longer half.
And we'll need that if it ever gets back.
If we ever have, if we ever have to do one, we'll become an NS four. Is that NS four? NS four?
Yeah, it's a NS four.
That's the thing. We just have to do it. Can't just take the money and not do it.
That's the one.
I think you would ask that right there.
You go back to.
If you go back to the service. Do you have any questions on that one? One forty-six.
One forty-six.
That's not one.
Back to one forty-six.
Now we're back to one forty-six. That service fund.
Get back to stormwater.
Sure.
We had no issues the other Friday when we got all right, right, deal with that.
Okay, so we've made, so, so we had the downtown improvements. There's downtown improvements on Carolina that we partnered with. So DOT did the whole resurfacing project. You guys recall, you guys budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for stormwater improvements downtown. We were able to do that for how much, Philip?
We did it for seventy thousand, fifty, seventy thousand.
We were able to tag on to that project they were doing. So we replaced the catch bases and also some roof bricks in downtown. We also did some work down, or was it, they might actually have worked down Carolina, some of the spots we had.
Yeah.
Yep. And then the work we've been doing, and you know, some of the ditches and whatnot, making sure to maintain. We've been pretty good so far. Very proactive approach to what we're doing. Again, the leaves not being loose has made a difference. It's not, we're not seeing as much in those catch bases that's clawed everything, because if it can't get through those, it can't be transferred. The next step is that street sweep, and that will be the final pieces of it. So we're, we're doing okay.
Is that big project still at the Tompkins Stadium, or are we just, since this is going so well?
It's going so well. That project, the FEMA project that was going on became, it started before I was here, and it became so difficult to maneuver the new program, because they have several new programs that have come out from then. So that stormwater project, it didn't go anywhere. It essentially became too cost prohibitive for us to actually do it. The engineering that was being done for it had to be all completely reengineered, because it involves some maintenance that wasn't allowed, so we ended up being able to move away from that.
Okay, now, my question, I think it's about the same project. Okay, DOT, San Juan DOT candidate, they kind of resurfaced it all from Carolina Fifth Street.
Fifth, all the way down to.
Yeah, so.
One fifty-one.
Between Fifth and Fourth Street. So I thought we had talked about the one eight, major, so for conduit.
Yep.
Between fourth, is that the plan still?
So that is, so from Fifth Street all the way to one fifty-one was repaid. We did some improvements from Fifth to Sixth Street.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the catch base improvements, and that allowed for addition, because Reddit was all kind of catching it to one spot, and didn't have time to, essentially, have enough time.
We were not taking water off of the roadway from Sixth Street. Basically, the only place where we're taking road, water off the roadway was right around Hovmanham, or the old Hovmanham, Wells Fargo. And I guess the Mighty Oak Park, or Mighty Oak Tavern, or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
That's basically the throats and catch bases we put in now. That's basically, the throats and catch bases we put in now allows, the way they're designed is allow to catch water as it runs down the gutter line.
Yeah.
Um so we're catching it. We're giving it more time to get into the system and not rushing it off at one focal point.
So.
Um but now what you might be talking about is.
Oh, we're talking about is that it was additional project we applied for, for three million dollar.
Oh, yeah.
That was to replace the uh line from Fifth to Fourth.
That's right, yeah.
Well, that to Co.
Co, that's right, because it's a, that goes from a thirty six inch or forty eight inch to down to a twenty four or thirty six inch. And that bottleneck is a problem. Now, we applied for that. It's a three million dollar project. They did not give us that grant as we, and I let you guys know, we didn't get a warrant that almost a year ago.
Yeah, we did.
We did not get that. Uh if D O T ever does any type of resurfacing on Fifth to Fourth, that's when the time.
See, that's why I thought maybe why they did go from uh Fifth Street back to Fourth Street.
Cause they knew they wanted to do it.
Yeah, just right, you know.
No, they they identified that as the first part that needed the most work, and it did down Carolina, there were several areas that needed it.
Okay, alright, yeah.
And I believe that had been done relatively recently in D O T terms, uh the Fifth to Fourth, isn't that relatively new? Uh the thing that we're gonna be doing though is we did have, we do a new uh line painter. So we are going through and doing all the parking lots downtown and at Hampton Island. And we're gonna be doing the Carolina, that portion of Carolina to the new lines to paint the parking lot lines. Uh so we will have a fresh coat, so it'll look decent.
We started that last week.
Started that last week.
So this parking lot has been put through and half of Centennial Park has been done, and then all the parking spots down College have been done. Well, almost all of there's like two that had cars in them, so we're gonna do it, but we'll plan on getting this parking lot right here. Um either this week or next week, and then get some of the parking lots around like Carolina lunch next, or next week or two. But our plan is to get all of.
Yeah, so not on plastic, so so far the work between Fifth Street, Sixth Street hasn't worked.
So far, yeah, I haven't, I mean, we.
I haven't seen it.
That was a day that it should came down, you know, one day. And I mean, it flooded, and I'm not sure, we haven't really been tested that to.
Somebody said blank, I'm hearing from blank.
I don't think so. By long, long rains, we have, uh the work we've done the last three years has made a difference in the way that town is flowing.
What was it, two weeks in a row?
It was quite a bit, and we had some rain up from State and Robinson. When they, when Robinson starts raining down, and also, I can't not fault, I mean, not have to give credit where credit's due. The work with Snoke and Duke that we've been doing to maintain that relationship, to maintain the communication, that's a difference too. Uh they're talking more, they're talking to us more about when they start draining those lakes, cause that's a big factor too. Uh when Robinson starts draining, it takes about eight hours for it to press wood, and then if press wood isn't prepared for, it will flood. And so then floods that go. So the work that they've been doing has been tremendous in making sure that we're all prepared for the upcoming storms. And as Jeff reminds us, it's like thirty days till hurricane season. He counts it down. He's very excited.
Jeff, chief bird.
Uh so.
Come on board and on down.
Well, we're we're prepared, and our staff is very seasoned with dealing with storms, and so we're prepared.
We did work with D O T yesterday and kind of last week, trying to alleviate some of the flooding down here at a bridge on Fifth Street. Um there's an alcohol ditch and rest with that needs cleaning. We did a lot of cleaning ourselves, and then we got with D O T, and they had a crew out there yesterday working on some stuff, and then we're gonna go back behind them. And see if we can kill some of the vegetation that's growing inside the actual alcohol pipe.
Very good. Sounds good.
Wait, I know, I already made y'all go to one forty seven, but would y'all mind flipping to one thirty? I gotta point this out really quick. This is a very short thing, and this is important for y'all. This is for our multi-county business park, blood seven. Alright, this is, alright, we blow up this because this is the, this is the one where we get eighty percent of the tax revenues. The county gets a twenty, we give one percent to the county. This is where Lowe's is, that area over there. This is our, we need to enjoy it, because the agreement expires on six, nine, twenty twenty five. This is our last year on it. So then it will go back to regular tax village. That will go over to the general fund, but this will not, this will not pay. So we cover Duke bills within this, not those, not this current year, but like the budget working on now is fine. We still have, but the one after that, we can figure, we're gonna see something different there coming up. And I'm just gonna try to be aware of that expires.
That Kirk Atkins is talking to. Yeah, um Councilman Atkins is supportive of extending the agreement, so it may be worth at least um.
Absolutely.
You know, can't just ask.
Just put that one up for me, okay?
Oh, we're good.
Alright. So that would be exciting if they would.
I wouldn't call it likely, but you know.
Yeah, I wonder when I, how far I'm gonna do that. I can work on that, um up on my list of things to follow up on.
Is this definitely part of it?
That's not just.
This one covers uh Lowe's, isn't it, Walmart?
That's the Walmart.
It's Walmart.
Walmart, all that, yeah.
We have two in operation right now, this one, and then we also want to carry forth the river.
Yep.
And when that was, when that was put in place, a lot of the developments out there now is not there.
Yeah.
And where we really reap the money is with the new development.
That's exactly right.
I mean, it was.
And I, if you've been to any of those institutions, that's something I know they hit on with the multi-county business parks, tips, things like that. They are instrumental for development.
And the same thing with Fourth and River, if we can get some development going on, they're gonna be breaking.
That's right.
Money on that as well.
Correct.
But the point I was making, man, it was like a multi-county business park, and if there, if the county's interested, it takes a little bit of time, because it's time to start into county. City Park has been additional county, which now with the Lake County, has to be multi-county.
Lake County would celebrate it.
Right, so it takes.
One percent.
Yeah, I would give you one percent.
It takes all the way to the house, we pass it all there.
It's true.
It's a bit of work, but if they're, if they truly are interested in now, just for council.
Like too greedy to the public here, it's more than that.
So we kind of work things out between the eight and twenty three dollars in Harpsville, cause that's a hundred and one percent.
Yeah, confirmize, yeah. The one percent. We do, so it's interesting, the way this is set up. They call me, if I haven't sent it, but Lake County calls me, um they are, they make sure they get that. But with the new one we did with Fourth and River, it actually, Johnson County split it out this time, the one percent, they send it directly to Lake County, which I'm sure they appreciate, cause now they get it throughout the year instead of one bump song.
Okay, alright, and then lastly, I think we have page one forty seven now, debt service fund.
One forty six.
One forty six for you guys. Um so that just shows. Um so this is showing our new principal name for this year, so that was the two point two million dollar capital, so it went from one ninety three to two oh one.
Yeah.
Page fifteen here. So that's just our new debt service. Any question about that?
And there's no increase there, so our debt's saying the same.
But we get through the same thing as. There is concession fund.
One twenty two, I believe.
Just doing some revenues there.
Yeah, starts on one twenty two and then the bunch right off is one.
We went up twenty one hundred dollars. We're now expecting seventy five thousand dollars with expenditure of seventy five.
Yep.
Hundred pounds, page one twenty three. We're just, we started jumping around.
That's what I'm thinking.
I don't want y'all to think we skipped anything, so I'm glad you know that was there.
Typically, we talk about this at four o'clock. We're really tired, so now everyone's bright eyed and wish you'd tell. Okay. Any questions about any of that? Guys, we've gone through the budget.
Yeah.
Alright.
Two forty seven minutes.
You love it, two P.
And I, I, we have a bunch of them for you guys, so you don't have to worry.
This is you.
Okay.
Alright, we'll be available. Any questions when y'all are ready to read this, again, live by live. I know you are every day.
So.
I do have a question though.
Okay. Okay.
I think a couple of years ago, they had a glossary evolve with term, and I was. Similar to that, that leads to the city of Harpsville.
Glossary for all.
They, they threw it to.
My personal story.
With that, I don't need that, like, turn back for, finish your debt service, blah, 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 all the, all the city budgets up there, but I have.
Was it hospital specific, or was it just a generalized?
We've got a generalized one, but.
Cause I can give you like a harpsville word of a dictionary if you want. We, we can, we can work on something, maybe see you have that.
I know, I got it somewhere, I have.
That's, I wonder.
I just carried it around and also disappeared, like, they didn't last ago.
Do this ever exist?
I won't close the door, so he's probably.
Can I say one thing before you go ahead? So again, the timeline, we look for your budgets. If you have any questions, ask us. We have a work session next week. That is a backup. If you guys have anything that wants to come up and bring up. They talk about again next week, we have a work session. We're gonna talk about the public safety building and a couple of other things. And then we have our first read on May fourteenth for the budget, so look through and study if you have any questions, but I think, you know, some questions are already asked. I think those are good questions. But um just, that's our backup day, so we have more time to talk about if you guys want to, but other than that, we're, we're good to go, I think, with the balanced budget. And we will be adding in the, the phones. That's the only addition I have right now. How about these replacements chairs? You got about five grand somewhere. I need to tie that, so we're gonna worry about that. Anything else? Wanna go to the club? Or we. Um well, thank you, everyone. Uh the work session was here by.